Are we technically ready? We are, okay. This is the Thursday, November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two regular village board meeting. First, let's call the meeting to a halt and have a roll call.
Trustee Hallwax, trustee listener.
Here.
Trustee Mulvaney, trustee Underdunk.
Here.
Trustee Rubin.
Here.
Trustee Vrie.
Here.
And I'm here.
You are.
We are live streaming this meeting and will post links to the live stream on the village's social media pages. We'll make the recording available on the village's YouTube channel following the conclusion of tonight's meeting. The next item on the agenda is consideration of the minutes. We've circulated the minutes. It has been published online. The minutes we're looking at are the village board committee in the hall meeting from October eighth. And the regular meeting for October twentieth. Does anybody have comments or changes on the minutes? And if not, is there a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Second.
The motion has been, approval has been made. Seconded, let's have a voice vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries, okay. Next item on the agenda is public comment. This portion of the meeting allows for those in attendance to address the board regarding non-agenda items. I'll ask the public comments that relate to agenda items to be made at the time we discuss about the agenda. All comments should be limited to three minutes and I'll notify the speaker when the time is up. Are there any non-agenda comments? I don't see any, okay. Next item is the report of committees. The first committee is the committee of the hall. We often have those meetings immediately before this one. We didn't have one tonight, so there's nothing important. Next item is the finance committee. We had it due the other night. Trustee Vrie.
Yes, thank you. So we met on Tuesday and covered a few things. The first being just the monthly finances of the village. As has been the case all year, finances are in good shape. With sort of one notable, I wouldn't call it an exception, but a little different in that property taxes have not come in yet for the second payments. The bills just went out, so we would expect those to begin trickling in. And really, we hope and expect our normal revenue from property taxes to be as expected. The rest of the categories are all in good shape. The village is doing well. Sales taxes are doing very well. Places for eating tax is doing well. So activity is good in town. We also went through our CIP. Normal, our normal progress. I don't think we have any projects this year, or this, not this year, this month. And then we moved into the big part of the meeting, which was our review of the draft budget. And went through all the various activities within the village. And each of the committee, or the department heads, gave presentations to us to talk about their individual departments. And we got a very good overview of the village. We will present the budgets next month. And what else? Oh, and the grants committee. We approved the grants from the village. And that was our meeting.
Thanks for that report. The next report is the plan commission, trustee listener.
Yes, we are involved with the applicants, the plan, village staff, and the council staff. The land commission have been attending the village's board and commission over the last month. These include the park board, the school board, the library board. Some for the yellows, some for the foundation, and preservation commission. The purpose of these meetings is to kind of bring the local stakeholders up to speed on the whole campaign planning process. And get some initial feedback on what issues are important to these groups and what they'd like to see from what happens in the plan. These meetings are going to be taking over the next month. Including some meetings for sustainability, task force for general comments, and the council for the mission. And then on November thirtieth, we're going to have our next meeting where the commission is giving your reports about what is occurring from different boards. That they've had. On November thirtieth, we're also going to have a presentation by the council. About what they've been hearing from their community outreach efforts. And about the state of the community, about what to do with those things. And our strengths, weaknesses, and the huge opportunity that we have as the work of this company. And we've been doing a poll, which is now, where it's designed on the campus, on the website. Which is www.glenco.org. Or, and then we've done some surveys. There's still, you know, opportunities to public comment. Go to the website, go to the comment board. And idea wall, just by the way, the first thing we're back. That's, uh, something.
Thanks for that report. The next report is the golf advisory committee. Normally, the village board liaison, the golf advisory committee, which is trustee Hallwax, will report. He's on a much delayed plane, so he's not doing that. So our golf, uh, seller, and also will provide a report on the golf advisory.
Thank you. I like my new title. Reviewing October was a, was a very successful month for the golf club. We exceeded our revenue budget by one hundred percent and had nine hundred rounds over budget. So a very good end to the season. The golf advisory board did meet in October. We reviewed the proposed budget for next year, going over payroll, expenses, and the rates, the proposed rates. It's a very detailed and long meeting. We did work with outside contractors to construct the croquet court. Part of that construction was removing two chipping greens that we had in place. We repurposed all of that bent grass on the golf course, saving us thirteen thousand dollars in expenses for the bent grass. Friends of the Glenco Golf Club, very hard at work. They've created a new website, glencofriends.org. And are promoting the concept of the club at Glenco to promote all of the amenities that is proposed in the redevelopment plan. They are also engaging a second fundraiser to push for additional funds. I'm happy to report that we did receive a ten thousand dollar generous donation today from one of our residents. And the golf advisory committee is scheduled to meet this coming Monday to review the capital plan for next season.
Thanks for that report.
Thank you.
The next report is on the, would normally be on the sustainability task force. That's what people may, he's in Europe, he's not going to report, and there isn't a report tonight. So the next report after that is the council for inclusion committee, trustee Rubin.
Thank you. And the council met and had quite a long agenda. Among the things we discussed was our next presentation in the speaker series, which will be at Writers Theater. Tuesday, January thirty-first at six-thirty. You can check out the website, et cetera, for more information as it gets closer. But it should be really interesting. We've got two refugees, one recent and one not so recent, who will be speaking about their personal experiences. And the importance of being a welcoming community and what it really means to people, to refugees. So I, I think it'll be very interesting and I would encourage everyone to attend. We also talked about the fact that at Light the Lights, we had some conversations. There was some input given from council members into the event. Council members will in fact be present. And because we would like to be present at all sorts of events going on in the community. In order to talk about what our mission is and to get input from the community. So we will be there. We also talked about engaging with other boards, schools, et cetera. That's ongoing and is picking up pace. And we also talked about, oh, at our next meeting in December, I'd be remiss if I didn't say the plan commission is nice enough to be in attendance with us. And we'll be talking about the comprehensive plan and perhaps how we might be able to provide some input. And numerous other things that I won't go into because it's a very long report. It was a very interesting meeting. I encourage folks to watch it or listen to it.
Thanks very much. And our last, but not least, is a report on the preservation commission, formerly the historic preservation. That's trustee Underdunk.
Thank you. Tuesday, November eighth, Glenco Preservation Commission met in a hybrid meeting here at village hall. The commission met with Lee Brown, the village's consulting planner, to discuss the cultural and historic resource elements of the comprehensive plan. There was agreement that cultural and historic resources, especially buildings, are vitally important to community character, identity, and sense of place. They should be preserved. After a discussion of preservation techniques, including past proposals for contextual design review. It was decided that the comprehensive plan should include goals and policies that promote the protection, conservation, and reuse of our historic resources. A second meeting with Lee Brown is needed to flesh out some of these concepts. The second part of the meeting was devoted to an analysis of the Glenco housing market. And why the economics favor the demolition rather than the preservation of our historic resources. A number of preservation incentives and requirements were also reviewed, including public education, financial incentives, relaxed zoning standards, and other COVID amendments. More discussions needed on this, on these topics before bringing them to the village board. There were no new demolition permit applications filed in, in the last month. And our next meeting will be Tuesday, December sixth.
Thanks very much for that report. And that concludes the report of the committees. So the next item on the agenda is report of officers. And first, the village manager.
Thank you, President Rowan. Good evening, everyone. A few items to report on this evening. The first is a bit of fun to, and, and good news to share relative to our employees. And some of the awards that, that we have been able to bestow on them. So yesterday, our staff team gathered for our in-person employee appreciation luncheon. I'm really grateful that nearly a hundred employees, part-time and full-time, from all corners of the organization, gathered together to enjoy a meal, reflect on a busy year, celebrate the team's successes, and look ahead to the future. One important way we celebrate every year is the announcement of our employee of the year. And this year's recipient is payroll and benefits specialist Julie Guyer. Julie works in the finance department. And she's been with the village for a little over five years. But in this role, she's been only in, she's been only acting in this role for about six months. Julie was nominated by finance director Nikki Larson, who underscored her work ethic, adaptability, positive attitude, willingness to help others, and her drive to learn. All of which have been invaluable to the finance department and the village as a whole. In particular, she noted that Julie jumped in with both feet, working hours upon hours to ensure the success of our new payroll system. And I'll just add to those accolades that in my own interactions with Julie, she's always been a caring, professional, service-oriented individual. And I'm just really glad she's part of the team. So we've got a picture of Julie up there. There were also two special recognition awards that were presented. These are outstanding service awards. They were presented to Public Works Maintenance Equipment Operator Michael Lochner and to Rich McGowan, who's our planner in the building and zoning division. Both were recognized by their coworkers and supervisors for their excellent work and service to the organization and to the committee as, community as a whole. And again, it's just a nice opportunity to underscore the great staff team that we have working on behalf of our community every day. So it's always nice to be able to announce those, those awards. Our leaf collection program is underway in full force. Crews are currently working through the community. And as of today, approximately seven thousand cubic yards of leaves have been collected. Which is probably about two-thirds of the way through our collection year. Crews will be completing leaf collection operations around mid-December, although it's gotten a little colder than we expected. So those leaves that remain on trees may fall more quickly. But we will have crews out till around mid-December. Our website's being updated daily to provide information on where those collections are taking place. So do check that if you're wondering. Light the Lights, as trustee Rubin mentioned, next Friday, November twenty-fifth. Our downtown will again be a glow and beautiful lights to brighten up the winter months. I've asked communications manager Sammy Hansel to share event details and outline some of the fun changes we've made to this year's event.
Yeah, so Light the Lights is here. It's next week on Friday, November twenty-fifth. We hope to see you guys all there. We were able to secure a couple sponsors for the event. Seven Dental Associates is our presenting sponsor. And Jennings on the Park is also sponsoring. So they'll be at the event, participating in some capacity, handing out treats and welcoming people to their, to their businesses. The official lighting ceremony, which is now moved to Wyman Green, will commence at five fifteen P M. We're really excited to show off the new features in Wyman Green. Additionally, the Winter Village on Tudor Court will be taking place with live reindeer, frozen characters. And Writers Theater is graciously hosting photos with Santa. And they, they showed us the backdrop for photos of Santa and it looks great. So we're very excited to see that. Live music with Rosie and the Rivets will be at five thirty P M on Wyman Green. And then trackless train rides throughout the downtown as well. And then, as mentioned before, Glenco Council for Inclusion Community will be present and they'll have a photo booth station, which we're very much looking forward to seeing. So, yeah, any questions about the event?
We've got flyers up here for the board that outline the maps and the event schedule. That all is available on the village's website and we will be pushing it through our social media and e-news platforms over the next week or so. I hope everyone does come out and enjoy the lights and especially support our local businesses. You don't have to just do that on Friday. On Saturday, November twenty-sixth, it's Small Business Saturday. It's no surprise to this group or to anyone watching that the heart of our community are our small local businesses. And I hope, especially this holiday season, but all year long, that folks remember to shop Glenco first. And get those holiday shopping needs finished up in our downtown. Finally, there is an interfaith Thanksgiving service that is taking place this Sunday, November twentieth. That begins at seven P M. The Glenco Community, excuse me, the Glenco Clergy Association hosts this annual event. This year, it's going to be at Am Shalom, which is at eight forty Vernon Avenue. I understand the event will also be livestreamed. There is information on the village's website relative to the event. I know I've been asked to speak briefly, so has chief Lewandowski. And a number of community members will be participating this year. So I hope folks are able to join. And then last but not least, due to Thanksgiving, the Thanksgiving holiday village hall is closed both Thursday and Friday next week. Thursday and Friday garbage collection and recycling collection are both delayed by one day. So that's just a good reminder as everyone enjoys their Thanksgiving holiday. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the village president's report. We have one item, which is consideration of a proclamation declaring November twenty-two as Native American Heritage Month. Proclamation has been posted online, circulated to board members. If there aren't any questions, is there a motion to approve the proclamation?
So moved.
They're seconded.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. We have a voice vote, all in favor.
Aye.
The motion carries, the proclamation is adopted. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that have been published online in the community and reviewed by the board members individually. We don't think they warrant further public discussion unless anyone disagrees and if there are motions to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. I think for this, we need a roll call.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Underdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vrie.
Yes.
Motion carries, the consent agenda is adopted. The next item on the agenda is regular business. The first item of regular business is a public hearing pertaining to the two thousand twenty-two tax levy for the village Glenco and the Glenco Public Library. This is our public hearing. And I'll ask our finance director, Nikki Larson, to present.
And I do think you need to formally open the public hearing.
The public hearing is formally opened.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. If I can, maybe that's the slide, thank you. At the finance committee meeting on October eighteenth, the finance committee reviewed the initial draft of the two thousand twenty-two tax levy, which will be collected in two thousand twenty-three. At that time, there was a proposed levy calculation of twelve million thirty thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars. We used the best information that we had at the time to calculate that potential levy. As the board is aware, and we've discussed at several public meetings. Cook County has been woefully behind on issuing second installment tax bills. As part of that process, they were also behind in issuing the final tax extension for the village. Now that we have that information, because those second installment bills are going out, we were able to update the tax levy. The downside is it's a little bit less. But the new updated total, including what we expect for new growth and the maximum allowable increase under the property tax extension limit law would amount to eleven thousand six hundred and forty-six thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. Those are for the village levy lines that are including debt service and the small amount that we levy for fire. The change from the prior year is approximately two hundred and thirty-nine thousand. When we add in the Glenco Public Library, they're requesting an extension just over two point eight million. So it's two million eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars. That is a proposed increase of seven point three six percent. Before I go into the third line item, I do want to note that because the village is not home rule, we are subject to the property tax extension limit law. There is a maximum increase from one levy year to the next of five percent. There, it is possible that the village may levy slightly higher than five percent if there is new growth that's captured as part of the E A D. That will ultimately be determined by the Cook County Assessor. And there's also an assessment process that the state of Illinois goes through. So the final extension will be ultimately determined in accordance with the law. So even though those numbers are higher than five percent, they will be reduced back down. And the reason why we ask for a little bit more is to make sure that we capture that new growth. The last line item reflects what we are proposing for the debt service levy. This levy happens automatically and is not subject to caps. This is including any of the referendum bonds that we've issued, and this is in accordance with the schedule. Those would have been approved as part of the original bond issue when the village board approved that. Because of the way the debt service levy is structured, the contribution or the required levy this year is actually going down by four point eight percent. This is difficult to see, but it is actually in your packet in detail, so you can see it a little bit better there. This represents the entire levy. When we aggregate all of those property tax lines that are subject to the extension limit, plus the debt service and the library, we're looking at a total increase from last year of four point four three percent, or seven hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. In terms of next steps, at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions. We would ultimately bring the formal approval of the tax levy to the December meeting. And then following that approval, we would file the levy extension request with Cook County. And at this point, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you for that presentation, which we talked a little bit about before. This is an opportunity for a public hearing. Is there any public comment on the tax levy? I don't see any. Is there a motion to close the public hearing on the tax levy?
So moved.
This, second?
Second, yeah.
We need a roll call then to close this public hearing.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Underdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vrie.
Yes.
The motion carries, the public hearing is closed. And thank you, finance director Larson. The next item on the agenda is consideration of a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a franchise agreement renewal for the collection, processing, and disposal of solid waste, recycling materials, and landscape waste with Lake Shore Recycling Systems of Rosemont, Illinois. And I'll ask our public works director, Dave Now, to present.
Very good. Good evening. In two thousand seventeen, the village outsourced residential garbage, recycling, and yard waste collection services to Lake Shore Recycling Systems, L L C, following an extensive evaluation and request for a proposal process. At that time, the village entered into a five-year franchise agreement that will expire here at the end of two thousand twenty-two. As, as we, as the staff reviewed with the board in March of this year, the, the services provided by L R S have been consistent. And, and the feedback, the positive experience the village has had has been evidenced by the feedback that staff gets. And actually, very few negative comments over that five-year period. And those issues that do come up, L R S has handled those well. And, and that coupled with the fact that the magnitude and disruptions involved with the waste hauler transition make a renewal a better option for continuing to provide continuity of service. So with all that, in the board's direction in March, staff proceeded to initiate the negotiations on a renewal agreement. Before you tonight is a, is a copy of the final draft of that renewal agreement, where we worked together with the village attorney's office and Lake Shore Recycling to develop that agreement. A couple highlights in that renewal agreement, and we'll get to fees in a moment. It's a three-year term with the option for two one-year extensions. With, with some of the uncertainty of, of costs and inflationary pressures, staff was determined that a three-year agreement was appropriate at this time. Programs that will continue in the new agreement that, that were in the, in the original agreement. Just a couple of them to touch on, the hardship program, which is available for, for residents who aren't able to bring their garbage materials to the curb. That continues. There's a seasonal suspension of service provision that allows people that are out of town for long periods of time through the winter months to suspend their service and, and the fee for that service. We, it was important that we built into this agreement, there's a cart change-out provision, both for the garbage cart and the recycling cart. There's, that will allow customers to exchange their current sixty-five or ninety-five gallon garbage and/or recycling cart for a replacement or a different size cart at no additional charge. That'll be a, a no-cost cart change-out that'll be a one-time opportunity during the first twelve months of this renewal agreement. More information will go out to the community in advance of that, so we can prepare for, folks can prepare for that. The recycling incentive program, the original agreement had a, an L R S-developed recycling incentive program, or R I P, that is going to expire with the current agreement. It was a pretty, it was a pretty rich agreement to the village's benefit, but the recycling market has, has dropped off. And so L R S was not interested in continuing that same agreement. However, the, the solid waste agency of Northern Cook County, of which the village is a member, has a recycling incentive program. L R S has agreed to the village's joining into that for this three-year term. Where the recyclables collected in Glenco will be delivered to the Swank service provider, Groot, at their, at their facility in Out Grove. And then the revenues, when, revenues in excess of processing fees, there's a fifty-fifty split between Groot and Swank. And then Swank redistributes that revenue back to participating communities. So there's still a, still an incentive. So there's still an incentive program built in this agreement. The food scrap drop-off program, which has become very popular in the community, that was actually not part of the original agreement, it kind of evolved, and LRS was a willing partner that's provided at no additional cost. That will continue. That's a drop-off program on Temple Court on the south side of the Public Works Garage that has many loyal participants. It's a year-round program. Food scraps can also be dropped, can be put out at the curb during yard waste season along with your yard waste. That will continue. We have not, we have language in here if we decide at a later date to talk about a food scrap curbside program year-round, we would negotiate that as an amendment to the agreement. Highland Park plans to initiate that program this April, and we're, staff's intent is to kind of monitor the effectiveness of that program. Again, the drop-off program wildly popular and is working extremely well. And then some other services that will continue in the agreement, the collection of all the village municipal sites and public waste receptacles, recycling and garbage will continue at no cost to the village. Electronics drop-off, that's a popular program. There's a drop-off option on Wednesdays year-round at the Public Works Garage. That will continue, as well as the annual village-wide cleanup. Other than that, joining us tonight is Bill Kenny, who's the Municipal Services Manager with LRS, to answer any questions that the board may have directly of LRS. A comment about fees, the fees in the new agreement will increase in year one, and this, we're preparing material to go out to the community. The collection service, the fee to the resident is two parts. One is the LRS fee, and then they also collect for us the general collection services fee. The board may recall, we talked about that Tuesday night. It covers a lot of our ancillary services that, in order to keep the general fund from subsidizing the garbage service. That, the LRS fee increase for year one for the once-a-week curbside, which is 85% of the customers in the community are subscribing to once-a-week curbside, their fee is going to increase 13%. When you factor in the general collection services fee, that's reduced to a 9% increase in year one. And that primarily is because of the inflationary impact of labor costs, as LRS has shared, and Bill can comment to that further. The Teamsters Local 731 Union Contract, that's all the waste haulers in the Chicagoland area, contract expires in September of next year. And LRS believes, I mean, historically, the increases through that union contract have been 4% to 5% per year, but they're expecting that to be significantly higher, so they're, the balance there. We had a healthy back-and-forth discussion on fees, and we still feel that the fees proposed for 2023 are very competitive, we're at the low end of any of our neighboring communities for similar service. So with that, staff is recommending that the board consider the renewal of a three-year agreement and authorize the village manager to execute an agreement. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and Bill can join me up here as well if the board has any questions of LRS.
All right. This has been an excellent service. You know, we all have a gripe or two, which we could maybe mention, but this has been an excellent service. It seems like a smart idea to renew, and I don't think any of us are shocked that we're probably still a little higher this time. Are there comments or questions for Dave?
What's the annual increase after that first 9%?
It's established by the CPI with a cap of 5% per year.
Mr. Kenny.
Yes, sir.
I want to congratulate you on providing excellent service for us. We appreciate it. I appreciate it. I'm going to mention one comment, just to, you know, take back, because I've seen this. On a couple of occasions, this has happened to me, it's happened to my daughter and my son-in-law, you put your collection cans too close together, they leave a note saying, "Oh, too close, we're not getting them." And then, if you call, they come back and get them. So I would suggest that, you know, the first time it happened, I had no idea, and I would suggest that you start with, like, a hint before you don't pick up the garbage, and, you know, you'll probably save money, because you, I mean, they come back and take it. It's not like we wait another week, so maybe there are no other problems. That's the only thing, the only negative comment I've seen with your service in, you know, five years. Anybody else have any gripes?
Just me.
Just me, okay.
May I speak to that?
Absolutely.
First of all, President Hoin, trustees, manager at Crowley, it is absolutely my pleasure on behalf of my company to be here tonight and to extend this partnership with this excellent community that we feel very close to. I also want to throw a bouquet of roses at Dave and his staff and everybody that we work with over the years. It just, it couldn't be, it couldn't be a better community to work with, so we're very grateful for that opportunity. Having said that, to address your concern, I did hear about that. I've got to tell David, it's sort of a mea culpa. It's not a very common thing. Generally speaking, if carts are too close together, it's not ideal, because we work off automation. We have the grabbers that you've seen on the trucks, and they put it into that three-yard Corrado can at the front of the truck. Having said that, we should be so precious that we just sort of sticker it and not dump it. If we sticker something like that, it should still have been dumped, and then maybe sort of a polite, not heavy-handed sticker that said, "Please, if you could." So I apologize for that. That's not typically the case, but I accept your criticism very much.
Okay. Thank you, again, thank you for providing an excellent service. Is there a motion to approve the resolution authorizing this agreement?
Some rule.
There's a second. It's been moved and seconded. We need a roll call.
Trustee listener.
Yes.
Trustee underdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vrie.
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you for coming, and thank you again for your service.
Thank you so much, everybody. Appreciate it very much. Had a wonderful, thanks, Dave.
Thank you, too. The next item on the agenda is consideration of an ordinance amending Section 5 S 105 of the Glencoe zoning code, which concerns signs. And we've talked about this before, and I'll ask our Development Services Manager, Taylor Baxter, to present.
Thank you, President Rowan. Wrong the wrong way. As you mentioned, we have been talking about this for quite some time. It's been before you on a number of occasions, so I'm going to try to avoid diving too deeply into the details of the background of this. But this is a pretty comprehensive update to the sign code. The village board referred this proposed amendment to the zoning commission to the, excuse me, to the zoning code, was referred to the zoning commission in the spring of this year for a public hearing and a recommendation. That public hearing was held over the course of a couple of meetings in October, with the recommendation of approval of the amendment made with some changes that we'll get into in a moment. That was made at the zoning commission meeting earlier this month. The amendment is now back before you for a final decision. The purpose of the amendment, as a reminder, fix usability and clarity issues for staff and businesses and sign contractors, minimize content-based restrictions based on some recent legal cases that prevent us from regulating what a sign says, basically. Also, we've received direction from this board to minimize, excuse me, to maintain current policies wherever possible. So when we went into this with the one exception of window signage in commercial areas, which we'll discuss in more detail in a moment, we really went into this with the intent of maintaining the outcome of our sign code regulations wherever possible. We did not go into it looking to change the size, shape, location, number, et cetera, of the signs. So I want to focus on what the zoning commission considered and what the outcome of their discussion was and their recommendation. They really focused, they had a pretty wide-ranging discussion, but they focused on a few topics. Problematic sign types, particularly political signs, really tied to how those would work with our, trying to become more content-neutral in our regulations. Commercial window signage, which is really the only significant policy change that this proposed amendment includes. There was some current concern among commissioners that if we're getting rid of our ability to regulate the content of signs, that we would want to be able to address hate speech or other offensive content in signs. And there were some various minor changes throughout that they recommended. To start off, problematic sign types, our current sign code, if you remember, includes quite a number of really content-based sign types. We regulate what type of signage you can have in certain places, the amount of signage based on what a sign says. That is something that, you may recall, we can really no longer do, based on recent Supreme Court decisions. So the proposed amendment replaces all of these with a new content-neutral sign type called a standard informational sign, which really kind of seeks to replicate how these current content-based signs function. The standard informational signage has restrictions on size, location, materials, and lighting, but it does not include content-based restrictions. In single-family residential districts, you'd be allowed six square feet per sign, no more than four feet in height, 10 square feet total per lot, no illumination, but we're not going to tell you what that sign can or can't say. You get additional standard informational signage under certain conditions. For example, if your house is for sale, you get an additional six square feet, but we're not going to tell you what that six square feet can say. We assume that if your house is for sale, it's going to say "for sale." If you have a house under construction, in certain districts, you get an additional six square feet. The ones where you are currently allowed an additional construction sign, the ones where you are not currently allowed an additional construction sign, you don't get any bonus. Again, we're trying to maintain the current outcome as much as possible. There was some concern about political signage. Currently, you get an unlimited number of political signs during election season. An unlimited number. There are restrictions on size, but you can put up as many as you want during election seasons. The proposed amendment says we're going to eliminate the content-based political sign category. In order to maintain our current standards as much as possible, the current amendment, as written, says you can have an unlimited number of standard informational signs during election season. Maximum six square feet, four feet in height, no illumination, but you can have as many as you want. The potential issue here is that currently, we can say, take down signs during election season if they're not a political sign, if they don't have a political message. We are, based on Supreme Court decisions, we've pretty much lost the ability to regulate what a sign says, and so there was some concern about allowing this unlimited amount of signage during political season if we can no longer say what the sign has to say. The zoning commission was comfortable with this, as it is. There was some discussion, but in the end, the zoning commission did not recommend changing this. Some of the rationale there was that they didn't foresee this being a problem. They didn't foresee people necessarily saying, "During election season, I'm going to put up an unlimited number of non-political signs. They don't think it's going to be a major issue." If somebody were to do that, those signs would not be grandfathered in long-term, because they would have to be removed after the election. So it's not, if it becomes a recurring problem and we decide we want to go back and try and rein this in somehow, we're not going to have grandfathered signs on people's yards, because they would have to take it down after an election anyway. So in the end, the zoning commission was comfortable with this as it is, and they did not recommend changing it. Commercial window signage, this is really the only significant policy change. Currently, our window signage is difficult to administer, limited to one sign per business. If you walk around downtown, in a walking audit, we found one sign, one storefront that currently meets the strict letter of this code. Our proposal was to allow more flexibility, make things easier to administer, but also kind of maintain a reasonable amount of signs on windows. The recommendation was to go to a percentage of window area that could be covered with signage. We had some discussion, we had a lot of back-and-forth with the zoning commission, including some visuals, which are included in your packet, of different storefronts around Glencoe, some of which are in compliance, some of which are out of compliance, and the zoning commission settled on a 15% maximum window area coverage. Most of the storefronts in downtown are probably going to be okay, as they are. There are going to be some that are not going to be okay and are going to have to come into compliance, which is going to be a different process to bring them into compliance. But for the most part, they're going to be okay under the 15% coverage. There are not going to be any storefronts that are okay under our current regulations that will become not okay under this new regulation. The ones that are not going to be okay are already not okay under our current regulations. So no, we do not anticipate having any businesses say to us, "These new regulations are throwing us out of compliance with what we could do before." If you're not in compliance with this, you are already out of compliance with what we had now. This should make it much simpler and much easier to administer. And we talked about how to define window area. We settled on, separate window areas will be either side of a door. You get 15% on one side of a door, 15% on the other side of the door. This is a new definition in the code. We had some discussion about whether window signage should go to plan commission for appearance review. The zoning commission settled on it should not. The window signage should just be, just fall under the 15%, and then it's allowed by right. It could potentially be sent to the plan commission with some minor changes in the code, but they decided they didn't want that. Addressing objectionable content, this was a back-and-forth we had. Again, we're limiting or removing our content-based restrictions, so there is some concern we could have hate speech in signs. There are some pretty significant limits. Under the First Amendment, we got some advice from our legal counsel on this, to what we can regulate on signage, and so the zoning commission recommended a new line to include limits specifically on what we can regulate, which would be obscene, fraudulent, libelous, defamatory, or slanderous language, or with threats or incitements of violence. So that is a new line in the code. Outside of that, we're pretty, that's pretty much what we can legally limit. Various minor other changes, nothing too significant, prohibition on painted signs in residential districts, new definition of storefront, as we talk about how signs are going to be limited as opposed to tying them to business establishments. But these are all, compared to the other changes, not particularly significant. The next step, adopt an ordinance with any changes as determined to be appropriate. If the ordinance is adopted, it will become our new sign code. With that, I will turn it back over to the board for any questions.
Taylor, let me say, thank you for a very clear, helpful, terse presentation. This is not the first time we've discussed this. We've had a lot of meetings. I just, I am grateful for the work that you've done. We've got the world's best lawyer giving us advice on what is sensible and will pass in legal muster. I told a lot of the people who are on the zoning board and the zoning commission that this was not going to be a problem, that they wouldn't have to spend long hours. I clearly lied to them, because we've sicked all these changes on them. I hope we get back to normal soon, and I'm grateful to all of them for all the work they've done on this and on this stuff that's coming forward. I think we've got, I think we have it right in light of legal changes. I'm not positive we do, and if we don't, we'll fix it. And I think that's the best we can do. With that, but like I said, we have talked about this, all of us have talked about this. We've all thought about it. Anybody else want to add anything on the substance? I think, I think we have it right.
I have two little good questions. How do we do a little cross?
I think it would be a question of, is it a sign or not?
It's not a sign.
It typically wouldn't be. I'd have a hard time saying that that would be a sign.
Second question, just for clarification, this does not apply to properties that are in public way or the public realm, is that correct?
That's right. That's correct.
Control by the public body, is that correct?
Right, and specifically prohibited by the public body. People do not have a right to place a private sign on our village's right-of-way.
And this is also not intended to apply to our village signs in the public realm.
Okay.
I just had to see you mention that the other businesses that are not currently compliant, they will have to come in compliance. What condition is that, or are we thinking of that?
That's not something we've had in depth. That's not something we've had in-depth discussions about. That's something I anticipate us having conversations about in the coming months, once this is adopted, about how to reach out to those businesses in a reasonable way to encourage them to come into compliance. It's going to be a process. I think we're going to have to try and look at, and some of our files might not be complete. We're going to have to see who may have been grandfathered in with a sign that's currently non-conforming. We'd want to allow those to stay. If you got a permit for a non-conforming sign, typically, we're going to want that to be allowed to stay in place. So that might be a bit of a back and forth. We know that there will be some businesses that will have to remove some wall signage. I don't think it's going to be an overwhelming amount. There will be a few that will have to remove some. That's something we're going to have to talk about, about the best way to have that outreach. It might be something the business services team works on, village manager's office. We'll get together and talk about how to outreach that.
And my other question, do we define elections?
We do. It is, it's defined in the code. I think it's when a ballot is certified until seven days after. Is that correct?
Right. And it's state law also has certain definitions concerning certain elections, but we do have our own definition.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the amended ordinance?
So moved.
There's a second.
Second.
So roll call, please.
Trustee Listner.
Yes.
Trustee Underdonk.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vrie.
Yes.
The motion carries the amended ordinance, and the sign code is approved. Here's hoping we get it right, and if we don't, we'll be back. Okay. Don't go anywhere, Taylor. The next item on the agenda is referral to the zoning commission of a proposed zoning code amendment allowing permanent outdoor cafes with a special use permit. Taylor, we've talked about this a little before too, but tell us what this one's about.
President Rowan, this is the first step in this proposed amendment. So background on this, over the last few years, we've had multiple inquiries about permanent outdoor dining on private property, mostly in downtown, but throughout the village. There seems to be kind of an increased ongoing interest in outdoor dining and dining. It may have been kick-started with the COVID pandemic. It seems to be something that's going to continue to be of interest in the future for existing restaurants and also for restaurants that are potentially looking at coming into Glencoe. There's some problems with that under our current regulations. Our zoning code currently says that all operations must be in a fully enclosed building, except for approved temporary uses. Only temporary uses can be outside of a fully enclosed building. Temporary uses per our code, allowable temporary uses include outdoor cafes. This is the annual permit approved by the village manager. It's only allowable between April 1st and November 30th on private property. Temporary uses may also not involve the construction or alteration of any permanent structure. So this means if you want to do outdoor dining, you can only do it on a year-by-year permit that you have to get approved by the village manager every year. It can have conditions on it. It can only be during those states. You also cannot construct any permanent structures involved with it. You can't put up pergola, you can't include any permanent seating, no permanent shade structures, et cetera, which really limits the ability for this permanent dining. The proposed amendment would allow outdoor cafes with the approval of a special use permit. So some considerations, possibly some potential benefits for going in this direction. Outdoor dining does have potential negative impacts, especially noise, light, traffic, parking, et cetera. Requiring a special use permit would allow the village to maintain control, hold public hearings, get feedback from neighbors, apply conditions of approval on specific projects, and even deny applications outright if it feels like outdoor cafes are not appropriate in that location. It would allow the construction of permanent structures, such as pergolas, shade structures, seating, and so on, which are currently not allowed. It would provide more certainty to restaurateurs compared to a discretionary annual permit. Once you had a special use permit approved with conditions potentially applied to it, you know that once you have those conditions met, if you're continuing to meet those conditions, that you're going to be able to invest in permanent structures, pergolas, et cetera, that you might want to have. Finally, it would allow the continuation of the current temporary outdoor dining program without requiring SUP approval. So this would not impact that annual temporary outdoor dining permit that is based on an annual permit. You'd have two paths, one for the permanent outdoor dining, which would be SUP, review, public hearings, approval by the village board, and then the temporary outdoor dining permit, which would be the current system of an annual permit. So this is the first step in a potential code amendment process. We're currently at step one, initial village board review. The village board, at this point, should consider the merits of this potential amendment. At this point, you can deny this amendment proposal outright, or you can refer it to the zoning commission for a public hearing and a recommendation. The zoning commission would then hold a public hearing, make a recommendation, as it did with the sign code, and finally, we'll return to you for final review and a final decision. If the amendment were approved, any permanent outdoor dining would require a zoning commission public hearing and village board approval, and then any permanent structures associated with permanent outdoor dining would require plant commission exterior appearance review and approval. So the next steps would be to, if you feel that this is something that merits further consideration, would be to move to refer it to the zoning commission for a public hearing along with any additional instructions or comments for the zoning commission that you feel would be appropriate. I'll turn it back over to the president.
We've talked about this a little before also. Thanks for that presentation. This is, this would be the first step only, as we're just moving on. I think we should do that. And because every time someone would go for a special use permit, the village would be in a position to impose whatever, if deemed appropriate at that time, which I assume would be, even though we're talking about permanent structures, we would not necessarily have to agree that this is permanent in perpetuity.
Whatever it wanted, as long as it's reasonably related to the condition imposed.
So.
Question, should the building code apply to these building structures?
Yeah.
It would. Yes.
So, you know, it seems to me we should, let's have a hearing. Let's find out whether this makes sense or not, and we can decide what we want to do. Anybody else, any further discussion here? Should we move this along? Okay, is there a motion to approve referring this proposed zoning code amendment to the zoning commission?
So moved.
A second. We need a roll call. Oh, no we don't. Just a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. It's approved. Okay. Next, don't go anywhere, Taylor. Next item on the agenda is consideration of a proposed amendment to section 4-103 of the zoning code, increasing the allowable building height in the B2 zoning district from 33 feet to 45 feet with a special use permit. It was not very long ago that we referred this question to the zoning commission. Taylor, tell us about that.
Thank you, President Rowan. This is another potential code amendment to the zoning code. This one would increase the allowable building height in the B2 zoning district, which covers Hubbard Woods Plaza, more or less, from 33 feet to 45 feet. Unlike the other two code amendments we discussed tonight, this one did not start with the village. This is not a village-initiated process. This was actually initiated by the owners of Hubbard Woods Plaza, who gave us an application and asked us to consider this code amendment. Code amendment process, again, first step, initial board review that took place in September. The board referred this to the zoning commission for a public hearing and a recommendation. That public hearing was held earlier this month, at which the commission, after discussion, recommended approval with a couple of significant changes, which we'll get into the details of in just a moment. This is final village board review, step three here tonight. Again, the B2 zoning district, the top is cut off a little bit here, but it's more or less Hubbard Woods Plaza, and also the one parcel, kind of in the middle, lower part of the screen, the bank building, to the west of Green Bay Road there in purple. Purple here is the B2 zoning district, but most of it is Hubbard Woods Plaza. The site that really kicked this off again is the former Walgreens site, which has been vacant for a number of years, down there in the southeast corner along Scott Avenue. The owners have had a difficult time finding a tenant for this. They have an approved building permit to construct a new two-story commercial retail building on that site. That permit, there's been no work done on that permit. It's been, it was approved about a year ago. The applicant has told the village that it may not be economically feasible to do that project right now at two stories, and that's what drove this request to allow potentially a three-story building on that site. For some context, again, the B2 zoning district, current height limit is 33 feet. Downtown, our height limit is 40 feet. Winnetka height limit in Hubbard Woods is between 35 and 45 feet, depending where in Hubbard Woods the site is located. Height limit directly across Scott Avenue from Hubbard Woods Plaza is 45 feet. So it's 35 feet where it's a budding residential, single-family residential, but right across the street from this site is 45 feet, which is what the applicants are asking. Again, they have approved plans for a two-story, 33-foot-high building on that site, not the entire Hubbard Woods Plaza, just that Walgreens site, former Walgreens site. That building is currently in hold. These are some elevations that you've seen before. They went to the zoning commission as well, showing the approved building. This is looking from Scott Avenue, the approved building at 33 feet, and then the red line across for comparison is a 45-foot elevation there. This is looking from the tracks to the east, again, approved building permit plans and 45-foot red line across the top. This is a, we do not have a formal application. We have no formal plans for the building. This is just kind of a draft of what a 45-foot-high building may look like on that site if approved. This is, again, looking from the east across the tracks. The zoning commission considered this earlier this month. They recommended approval of this amendment with two major changes. First of all, they recommended that any height increase over 33 feet be required to receive approval of a special use permit. They also recommend that this only be available on the southernmost portion of the B2 district and only east of Green Bay Road. And we'll talk about the reasoning in just a second. First, this is the SUP eligible area per the recommendation of the zoning commission. This would be the only part of the B2 district that could be eligible to apply for and receive a special use permit to increase building height over 33 feet. Area one there to the right is the site of the former Walgreens building. Area two, also along Scott Avenue, is a separate building with a separate owner. This is the building on the corner with the Coldwell Banker and the restaurant on the corner of Green Bay Road and Scott Avenue, which actually has a separate name. So per the recommendation of the zoning commission, this would be the only area on the site that is eligible to be a special use permit. The zoning commission consideration, they considered the fact that we currently have a comprehensive plan in process. The comprehensive plan will include a subarea plan for Hubbard Woods, which will work to identify the core purpose of this area, do a market study. We do more of a deep dive on the village's vision for this area. As you know, the comprehensive plan is unlikely to be adopted before the end of next year. This subarea plan is likely to be finished sometime in the middle of next year. It won't be formally adopted, but we'll have more information about this area from this study, which will be under consideration by the plant commission sometime in the middle of next year. So the zoning commission considered, you know, is this the appropriate time to go down this path? The zoning commission did not feel that this was reason to recommend denial of this application, but it did support a more conservative approach to acquire an SUP and also to restrict area restrictions to the southern end of the site. The zoning commission also considered several public comments. One neighbor to the northeast expressed some strong disapproval in writing. That neighbor was across the tracks to the north end of the site. A couple of neighbors to the west on Linden expressed some reservations about bulkier buildings in the area, having to look at bulkier buildings. The Friends of the Green Bay Trail requested some shadow studies to see what shadows might have an impact on the Green Bay Trail. Finally, the Chamber of Commerce expressed support for this concept. They expressed support for new elevator-accessible office space in this area especially, but they did feel like there was a need for this product in the area. So these comments also help support the zoning code, the zoning commission's recommendation to require additional project-by-project review through the SUP process, and to keep that eligible area away from nearby homes. And the nearby homes in this area are really to the north, the west, and the east, and so they're really trying to restrict the, at this point, to restrict that SUP eligible area for the height increase to the southernmost portion along Scott Avenue. So the next steps would be to take action on the adopting ordinance with any change determined to be appropriate. If this ordinance is approved as written, the applicant could apply for a special use permit for a 45-foot tall building on the former Walgreens site. They could not apply for one that extends beyond the former Walgreens site. This SUP would require zoning commission review and a public hearing and a recommendation, and would return to you for village board approval. That would be review of this specific project, including advanced-stage plans for that particular project. And finally, that project would then also require plant commission exterior appearance review and approval before a building permit is issued. And with that, I will turn it back over to President Rowan.
I have one question, and I understand a representative of the honor that started this is here, so we should give him an opportunity to speak. What's, are they okay with this special use concept?
My understanding is that they are. I don't want to speak for him, but they express support for it at the hearing.
We think that's okay. All this makes a lot of sense. Conservative, we can still, you know, do whatever we decide to do. We're not going to undermine the ability to have a broader plan, but at the same time, you know, we've got a vacant space that's not good for us, it's not good for the honor, not good for anybody, and this might be a solution. Anel Passik, did I say that right?
Yes.
Come on up. Tell us who you are and tell us what you think about this.
Good evening, folks. My name is Anel Passik. I have been with Hubbard Woods Plaza for 10 years now. I've managed the plaza. It is something that is dear to my heart. It is something that we have an intimate pons on, that we visit frequently, that we're part of, we enjoy this community. And we have encountered a hurdle in this proposed development that was approved to go up to two stories, where we saw our construction costs escalate approximately 40% from what we had initially budgeted due to inflationary factors, due to logistic chain issues, due to a plethora of issues. With that being said, we've identified a 20% equalizer in savings on a per-square-foot basis with going up this additional story by creating an additional 8,000 to 10,000 square feet on the third level without violating any of the parking ordinances or seeking any additional leniency in the code that's been presented. With that being said, I'm here to answer any questions. I apologize, a remainder of my team members were unable to attend tonight due to inclement weather conditions, but I am here to answer anything you have.
Do you, are you planning on asking for the entire 45 feet or something less?
We've gone through a few design exercises. To be conservative, we're asking for 45 feet due to how mechanicals need to be screened, where essentially rooftop unit that needs to be sheltered away from the peripheral vision of any bystanders that are walking by, that needs to be hidden. You lose about 13 inches from a curb adapter and an additional five feet because of an RTU unit that needs to be hidden from the public eye.
I have to say, this still seems sensible to me, and we retain, I mean, the goal here is to accommodate a development. We need to do that, and at the same time, to protect our residents. There aren't a lot of residents that should be adversely affected. It's the same height level as the street. The proposal from the zoning commission is only allowing this further away from where the folks were complaining. So this all seems sensible, plus we retain, we still retain total control, so I... So I, this, this just makes sense to me. Anybody want to talk about it, or should we? Okay.
Just to add, this is at a rail train station as well. Those of us in the planning community who talk about station area development, this is station area development.
Train station is down below, but yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah, period.
Okay, is there a motion to, and, and I, yeah, I want to, I want to thank the owners of Hubbard Woods Plaza for bearing with us here, Taylor and his group for working on this, and the, and the zoning commission, which gave this a good look and I think came up with the right answer. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Let's have a roll call.
Trustee Listner.
Yes.
Trustee Underdonk.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vrie.
Yes.
The motion carries, and thank you for coming.
Thank you.
It's okay that people didn't make it because of bad weather.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is other business. Does anyone have any other business they want to raise? I will raise only one thing. This isn't official, but we're all members of the Glencoe Caucus Party. The Glencoe Caucus Party has started their process by slating two new board members for the election coming up next spring. Georgia Mahopolis, Hillary Scott, they're here. They are noticeable because they're the entire crowd, but welcome. We're glad you're here and we're grateful that you agreed to help your town. Okay, the next item is closed session. We do have a lot of matters to talk about. That's 2C1. Is there a motion to move into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Listner.
Yes.
Trustee Underdonk.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vrie.
Yes.
The motion carries, moving into closed session. And then, we'll adjourn down here. Okay, thanks, everybody.